Well, it is six on the nose, so we'll get going. Welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Select Board meeting. It is the ninth of December. And before we get going this evening, Mike, would you care to read the quote?
Sure. Be sure to put your feet in the right place and then stand firm. Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Seeing no one rushing up to the podium, we'll move along to the Administrator's report.
The only thing I have to report beyond the agenda is we diligently pushing paper behind the scenes with FEMA. We submitted, where we signed today, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar request that should get us seventy-five percent of that back from FEMA and fifteen percent from MEMA. So our share would be sixteen thousand five hundred, keep it tight, Robin. And we have more than that to go, but never-ending paperwork.
That's progress.
Yeah.
That's, I know I don't have to tell you that.
Something.
That has been something. Wow. Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll never have to do it again.
Yeah.
Means your nose isn't just worn right off.
I think Matt says, but that's okay. He's enthusiastic. Outside of that, I think everything's on the agenda.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here in the town office unless announced otherwise. The Heart and Soul Team meets Tuesday, December tenth, at noon at the library. Planning Board meets Wednesday, December eleventh, six P.M. Conservation Commission schedules meet Thursday, December twelfth, four P.M. Land Use Committee Wednesday, December sixteenth, four P.M. Comprehensive Plan Review Committee Wednesday, December eighteenth, at six-thirty. And the Select Board meets next for a warrant-only meeting unless there's an emergency on Monday, December twenty-third, five P.M. at the town office.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing none, let's move along to the one set of meeting minutes from the twenty-fifth of November.
I move that the board approve the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? The only tiny little detail that I have is on line one oh two. There's an extra zero or capital O? A capital O.
No zero updates.
Whoa.
I've got something too.
Yep.
Yeah, it's number one there on the first page, so guess what?
Oh geez.
Yeah, yeah. We might want to add, the way I remember the conversation going is that Steve found a language in the charter saying that we could go ahead with the emergency because it was
Applied to public space.
Right, and that isn't in the minutes, and we might want to get that just to cover ourselves and be clear.
Yeah.
Am I making sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I don't think, it doesn't read
As, as the reason why the board proceeded with that.
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. It doesn't read like that right now.
Sure, I concur with that. What does the rest of the board think? All right. Do you wish to amend the motion?
I would amend the motion to reflect the suggestion that Select Person Ray has made.
Great. And seconded, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And tonight, we have a very exciting presentation regarding our revaluation here by RJD Appraisal, and we'll invite you up to the podium. Yep, that way the folks at home, our millions of fans watching on YouTube can participate. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me. So again, I'm Rob Duplessis from RJD Appraisal, and we're in the middle of the revaluation now. I had thrown together in your packet a very quick synopsis of where we're at at this point. Still in the first phase, which is, covers more than half of the work. Actually going out, visiting all the properties again, verifying all the information. Little spoil with the records that we've had. Vern's kept very good records. We're finding very, very few things that we didn't have or maybe was wrong in some way. So that's always good. That's always good. So we're about half done with that process. So we've visited seven hundred and eighty properties. This is as of the end of November. We have seven hundred and sixty-five to go. And I had a guy here today getting fired back up, but the weather, I think, is going to put him elsewhere for a couple of days, so you know, a good-sized crew, so I had projected early on that we would be through December visiting everybody. I wouldn't be surprised if that goes into the first half of January, but it doesn't put us behind in any way. Just, that was a really broad estimate on timeline. So that's going well. Everybody's been well-received. The taxpayers have been very welcoming, helpful, and good feedback from both sides. My guys have been representing me and the town well. Really enjoying it, and it's going as good as it can be. Showing up on people's houses, but it's been going well. So any questions about that part of it?
No?
So the next kind of couple of phases are going to happen at the same time. There's ample amount of work that's been done, so we take the record that we created, go to Trio, and see if there's any updates we have to do. Update the record from what we saw. There's some new ways of using Trio a little bit more intricately that we have in the past, so we're adding those little nuances to it. Get all, basically reprice everything that we've seen, and then continue to reprice as the guys visit the rest of it. After that, we'll take a view of all the properties that have sold in town for the last three years. Couple different reasons we do it that way is to gather enough data points. Small town, not a lot of sales, so the more we can get, the better. And it also gives us, it demonstrates what the long-term trend in Lincolnville for the real estate market. We all know what it's doing, but it's just good to see those numbers. And ultimately, we'll have a handful of properties that would have sold twice in the last three years to kind of really demonstrate how much of an increase in the market we've seen. So what I do now is, once everything's been input, everything's been visited, I go out back to the sale properties, just from the roadside. You know, look at the record, get another set of eyes and make sure their record is perfect. Then I take the sale price and I start creating my land schedule, start creating my building schedule. And I keep doing this on all property. I start with the very basics, you know, rural lots of just a house lot size that really gets you a good idea on your building schedule. And then I work on the rural larger lots to get that real land value. And then once I'm comfortable with that, I'll go to the waterfront, lakefront, to start seeing what those lakefront and waterfront land values will be. I continue looking at those until I get to a point where I'm comfortable, where the new assessments are mirroring what things have been selling for. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to come up with market value of property. So once we've accomplished that, and I'm comfortable with that, we then go back out to every property, again roadside, and implementing those new schedules. And that's where the fairness comes in. The schedules are based in market value here, and then implementing everything that we see to be similar. I mean, the vast majority of the property off the water is going to be just your regular rural residential property. So seventy-five, eighty percent of the assessments will be done that way. Just take care of the commercial waterfront, oceanfront with those sales as well. One more round of back to the record again. Once I've set my schedules, rereviewed all the properties for any updates, adding the land where we want to see it, input all that data. And then after that, we kind of then kind of rely on Vern to do his year-to-year work. You know, keeping up the deeds, all the office work that happens. Still monitor all the sales up until, leading up until April first of next year. Any tweaking we have to do, and we just kind of sit. Do regular day-to-day assessing. And then the last thing we do is, after all of our values have been set, we sit down with the town and we do a mock commitment. You've got a budget cycle that is starting very soon, so we'll have a good idea with the amount of money we need to raise. We send a notice out to every taxpayer for every lot that they have. And in that notice, mention of the revale, not just the new value that we set, but we kind of come up with a new mill rate estimate based on the best numbers that we have. Because it's been my experience that people can see a new number, and obviously it's going to be a lot higher than the old number, but that's only telling them half the story. What does that mean out of their pocket? What kind of tax burden shift are they going to see? So we want to put that out at the beginning. Here's your new value, here's your new tax estimate. We'll actually put a mill rate right on that notice. And then we give ample time for one-on-one meetings with any taxpayer that wants to talk to us here in the office. And that'll happen in such a way that as soon as we get done with those hearings, a week later, we'll have our normal commitment time, which is in August.
Great.
Pretty quick overview, but that's
Any more in-depth questions?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you seeing as far as fluctuation in the market as it relates to how you're signing values? I know this area has gone through a bit of a bump and then cool off. And you're looking at three years, you're getting both of those.
And that's really why we do it. Because the uptick, it's almost, it's hard to even measure since COVID's been here, what kind of increases on an annual basis we've seen in market value. The other towns that I work in around this part of the state, I've seen anywhere from twelve to sixteen percent increase in market value year-to-year, but not this year. Pretty much about half of that, maybe five or six percent. So when we test our sales, we put the most weight on the most recent sales. And then we will look at a 2022 sale and know that I need to consider factoring that sale up by X amount, percentage to come up with that. And I don't, even if the market's really booming, we don't anticipate. You know, if we set our values as of April first of '25, even though the commitment won't happen until August, we still want to be at April first twenty-five numbers. That's really the proper way of doing it. And then wait and see at that point. But a couple of years, so this study, a couple of years of significant increase, and this last twelve months, it really hasn't been much, but so.
Great. Anything else? David?
I've got my chances to ask.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming in and giving us an update.
Anytime, anytime.
Yeah, and good luck with the rest of your work.
Yeah, it's interesting for sure.
Yeah.
So maybe sometime in, we'll meet again in March if
Great.
If I ever see, yeah, unless something unusual happens, but we'll just set aside something in March.
Yeah, sure.
So what happens if someone hasn't seen you or your crew yet, and you're on to your next phase? I mean, I know it's probably not likely that you'll miss a place here in town. I haven't seen you guys. And it looks like you've, it looks like you've been on my route.
Yeah.
So I just kind of wonder.
So with so many, we put a lot of the earnest on the taxpayer. You know, the contract was in such a way that we weren't creating new. We were taking what was existing, vetted if you will, and just modify it and maybe fine-tune some particulars that we didn't have. And so it's basically just two visits to try to find somebody home. But people talk and neighbors talk, and we've had a handful that we had to run back out. We've already finished that part of town. They call up, we're here, we absolutely will go back out. But then there's multiple times after that. If I'm doing my roadside review of things and I know somebody that wants to see us, I'll stop in. One thing that'll get Vern off the hook this year, I don't know if we've told him yet or not, but the building permits that come out and the visits that he would normally do in the springtime, that's part of this contract. We do that. So, and most of it, we've already picked up, so just the active projects that have been going on from now till April. So we do all those. So again, in April, when we're out blanketing the entire town for those permits, we'll make an appointment to see somebody at that point. And if it all else fails, we haven't seen anybody, when those notices go out, the opportunity to meet with us here, the one-on-ones, that is totally run by the taxpayer, whatever they have questions on. And if they say, you've never been in my house, we have a group here, and I usually have a couple of guys running, so if you come in to see us, we can follow you right out to your house. So there's quite a few times to do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good, great. Thanks so much.
All right. Nice meeting all of you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
And last meeting, we had a presentation by the Chair of the Harbor Committee regarding harbor fees, and we have that in our packet. And so the first order of business is, if there's no issues with what was presented, is a motion to accept those fees.
I move the board adopt the Harbor Committee Recommendation Harbor Fee Schedule for 2025 along with a mooring inspection late fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? And you'll also see we have the Qualified Mooring Inspector List. And there is a new addition there, and you can see David's explanation. Do you want to add anything to that, David?
I don't think it's necessary. The new addition is not on the list as yet because I wasn't quite sure what process, if any, you wanted to do, similar to what we've done with new people in the past, so half-punted.
Yep. So thought, thought, yeah.
Actually, well, maybe this isn't the right time for it, but before that, there was a question from our last meeting on the parking with permits that we were going to get
Regarding
From the minutes here, a question was asked about the parking privileges for seasonal and single launch permit holders.
Yep.
Yeah, that was not, what was in there last time wasn't correct, and you revised, has that removed?
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay. So were you
I just, has the individual that would like to be added to the list, has he shown proof of insurance? No, he hasn't done anything except express an interest.
But we can make the motion contingent on him providing those things, which would be just in keeping with what the board has done in the past. All right. Well, entertain a motion then.
Okay, sure, I'll raise. I move that the board add Nicholas Hill contingent upon Mr. Hill providing proof of general liability insurance in the amount
Sorry.
Is that the wrong one?
No, we have, we first, first, we need to deal with the business of just the Qualified Mooring Inspectors.
Ah. I turned the page too quickly. I move that the board adopt the Harbor Committee, no, that's the Oh, it's right on the turn.
I move that the board approve the Harbor Master's Right to the New List of Qualified Mooring Inspectors for 2025.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And regarding the new interest to be on the Qualified
I move that the board add Nicholas Hill contingent upon Mr. Hill providing proof of general liability insurance in the amount of one million dollars or more. And he either provide a current diver certification and/or demonstrate that he has the necessary equipment to lift, I assume the word is lift, the entire mooring to above the water surface for inspection, and then reset the mooring in the position which had existed prior to inspection.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving along, at our last meeting, Selectman Ray, or Assessor Ray resigned from the Board of Assessors, and we have a vacancy, and we have a community interest form before us with an experienced individual who wishes to help us serve in that capacity. And if there's no questions for the individual, I will entertain a motion.
I move the board appoint Rosen Del Gary to the Board of Assessors with a term expiring June 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. And we also have an individual in the audience here who has expressed interest in a number of our committees. And we do have alternate positions on three of the four committees. The fourth being the Land Use Committee, which doesn't currently have any vacancies on it. And I would appreciate if you would come up to the podium just so we can check in with you. Welcome. Would you introduce yourself for the board and the public?
Yeah, I'm Bruce Cohorn. I'm up on High Street.
Wonderful, thank you. I guess my only question for you is, do you really want to be involved in all three of these committees?
No.
Okay.
Any one of them.
Any one of them.
Yes.
Which one would be your preference?
I'd prefer the Land Use Committee or the Comprehensive Planning Review.
Okay. So in that, in that situation, we do have an alternate position available there, so
That's fine.
Great.
Neither of those are fine.
Any other questions for Mr. Cohorn?
Well, yeah, you know, the alternate position is only in the Comp Plan Review Committee. You understand that, right? The Land Use Committee is full with regular
And the Review Committee is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Great. Any other questions? No? Okay, super. Thank you. I will entertain a motion then.
I move to appoint Bruce Cohorn to the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee as an alternate member with a term expiring June 2025.
Second.
Moved and well-seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and we appreciate your service to the community. And we won't be offended at all if you don't wish to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are absolutely welcome to. Okay. Well, then, moving along, agenda item number nine. We need to appoint a Registrar of Voters, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Karen Seacott as Registrar of Voters with a term ending December first, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any dis Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I'm looking, that should be December thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay.
I don't know if I wrote first, but
Yep.
Boy, does somebody prove for these things?
Apparently not.
I amend my motion to a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Perfect.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And next up, we have the duty to countersign the warrant and notice of election for the Five Town CSD. Do you wish to give a brief synopsis of what this is for and why?
Sure.
For our adoring public?
Yeah, the Five Town Community School District is seeking to borrow an amount not to exceed seven point three million dollars to construct and equip the following projects at the high school. Replacing the Don Palmer Field with artificial turf. HVAC system improvements to replace the failed geothermal system. Some replacement siding in windows and some upgrades to the Strom Auditorium. And they are looking for us to conduct that election in all five communities on Tuesday, January fourteenth. And we're proposing for this election and this election only to do it right here in this room.
Yep. And with the understanding that this is largely a ministerial act by the Select Board, so
I love the fact that they call it minor capital.
That's a bit hard to take, but
There's also no mention of how much money might be supplied by money that's been put away over the years and
And those are great questions to ask at the public hearing, which they will be required to hold before this takes place.
This is a lot of money to be targeting a very small group of voters in each town. It's in the wintertime, not in the summer and June when everybody's back in town. That's a lot of money.
Yep. And with that being said
Sorry.
No, it's okay. No? That being said, I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that the board countersign the warrant and notice of election to call Five Town Community School District Referendums for January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And it is that time of year where we can ponder and promote any sort of budget goals or priorities for fiscal year 2025. And we do have, we received correspondence from Select Person Ray regarding an idea he wanted to put forth to the board. And of course, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but
Right.
Initial feedback?
Yep, just want to get initial feedback. So I included that in your sent to you guys, and it's in there. I apologize for the typos in there. I was kind of trying to do it in my multitasking, and it didn't really work out well. I just kind of hoped that David would edit out all my mistakes.
Edit your ego? I don't think we can do that.
I would not mind, no, I would, yeah. Anyway, what I, I think I mentioned this before to the board. What I'm going, plan on doing is proposing to get a budget, making a budget proposal to the Budget Committee and to the Select Board regarding a reserve account, a savings account, whatever you want to call it, for the express purpose of matching grants, or grants, and having matching funds available should any grant opportunities arise. Because like it says in the email, I mean, just in the few years I've been on this, I've seen more than a couple few grants come and go, which we haven't been able to take advantage of because we didn't have matching funds. And they might have been good opportunities, they may have not, but we didn't, we weren't able to discuss them as opportunities. And anyway, so I'm thinking just a capital reserve fund dedicated to grants, so in two years, four years, however, we might have enough funds where we can say, yeah, let's take advantage of this. We have the money. So I wanted to get your input on what you think a reasonable amount of monies would be. All money is too much, but, you know. And see just generally how you feel about such an approach to planning for the future.
Well, that's going to be my first question to you, is what number would you propose?
Well, yeah, I mean, the kind of grants that I've seen come in are basically two kinds. You've got the small grants and the moderate grants. And the big grants are way down the, down the pike, in my opinion. And so anyway, the small grants are basically, you're looking at twenty, matching twenty percent of a hundred thousand bucks, something like that, or seventy-five thousand or a hundred thousand bucks. So it'd be kind of nice in two years if we were able to take a stab at one of those grants if it came to us. And in that case, I think like a yearly deposit of twelve thousand five hundred bucks would get you to twenty grand, which is, which would be a twenty percent match of a typical thousand dollar. Grant would also prepare you in four years to tackle the so-called moderate grants of closer to two hundred and fifty K. You'd have close to twenty percent of, a fifth of two fifty. That's the way I'm thinking, yeah.
All right. Thoughts from the board?
It would be nice to be able to do that.
Sure.
But with us, you know, with it being the way it is and the way we've always tried to manage our budget, I see it, how, where's it going to come from?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I
And what do we look at? I mean, we've got a priorities list that's fifteen-plus items deep that we are trying to get to. We also have items that have already been approved that are backburned for a number of reasons. So I don't disagree with you, Mike. But I'm just wondering, what were you thinking? Where would it come from? What would we what would we not fund, and what would we reduce funding on to achieve that? I mean, twelve thousand five hundred dollars in the grand scheme of things for a year is not a lot, but it is.
Well, no, I, I Oh, I agree, yeah.
And it's, and sure, you're on your way to achieving a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be able to look at a specific level grant on something that we need to do, i.e. sidewalks or something like that. You know what I mean? The taxpayers are screaming for stuff like that. It's a good, it's a good idea You know what I mean? The taxpayers are screaming for stuff like that. And it's a good, it's a good idea, but I, how much is a good question, but.
Well.
What, what, what area do we, you know what I mean? What area do we shave from?
Yeah, and, and I certainly don't have the answer to that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, hopefully, that kind of discussion could take place in the budget committee amongst ourselves.
Yeah.
To try to find those areas that might deserve, be deserving.
Yeah.
Or might not. You know, we'll find out what those might be. Yeah.
I mean, it's more than we have in contingency.
Right.
And, you know, it sort of feels to me like creating a duplicate contingency. Whereas, you know, okay, if we want to have money on hand for things like this, I'd almost rather someone make the argument to increase contingency to have funds available for opportunities and that they be vetted through the sort of process of weighing the, weighing a grant opportunity against our priorities list and whether it's something we can afford to take town office, you know, staff time and, you know, all these sorts of things, you know, the things that end up, you know, as you said, kind of impeding our ability to chase after these grants, but at the same time, you know, having it be somewhat cumbersome or having to have a special town meeting, I feel like, you know, then it passes multiple straight face tests of making sure that it's something that not only the board, but the people of Lincoln really want to have, rather than just kind of stuffing money that we really don't have in the budget. That's, that's my initial thought, but.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I, I, I could, I could see that and how this board wants to present it to the public, to the legislative body in a small scale or more immediate public hearings or a town meeting at a larger scale.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, that's definitely a question.
Yeah.
Uh, to ask.
Robin.
Yeah, um, well, I was under the impression that the contingency fund was somewhat limited in the scope of what it could be used for, and it wouldn't necessarily be, um, something, I, I guess to me, when I was thinking about this, I'm thinking more like our priority list and the unfunded things on our priority list. And that, you know, if a grant opportunity came along that relates to our priority list, I didn't see it as mutually exclusive. I was thinking it was a good way of having the agility to be able to say, oh, you know, a funding opportunity's come available for, and this project that we don't have funds for, fits the requirements for this grant funding opportunity, and it would be a great way, instead of us kind of a hundred percent doing things ourselves with our priority list, of saying, oh, you know, if we have ten thousand dollars available now and this project's fifty thousand, you know, all of a sudden we can get a project that we have on our list and we're thinking it's fifty thousand and we don't have the money for it, but if we have this reserve available, it allows us to take on that project and maybe actually get it done for only ten thousand dollars and we've saved forty thousand. So that's the way I was looking at it. But if I'm wrong and contingency is a place that those funds could be used, I'm looking at you, Dave.
Well.
I don't know.
Any place you, a majority of the board can decide is a.
Some full discretion.
Valid municipal function.
I always thought it was kind of, it's broke. You know, this was broken. We can take money from contingency.
Well, yeah, yeah, I was gonna jump in and say, yeah, I've always, always been on depressed, Nick. Boards have always considered contingency for emergencies, for boilers breaking or whatnot. And, which is different than what the approach that I, I was suggesting here, which is for planning down the road. I would hate to take from contingency because this great grant opportunity to, to benefit the town of Lincolnville comes up and suddenly the boiler breaks. That type of thing.
Sure.
I'd like to keep them in separate.
Um, I'm not, generally, I'm not in fa- fair, uh, in favor of putting money, money aside for this type of thing. I've been thinking, and my thought is exactly what I think Mike put in the email, that typically it's because we don't have the time. It's not that we don't, we couldn't come up with the money, it's that we don't have the time to go through the process. And part of that is because we don't know about the opportunities until way too late. The best way we could, in this vein of thought, the best way we could benefit the town is to have a resource, be it a contracted resource for, I don't know, ten or fifteen or twenty thousand a year, or make a part-time person, a full-time person, or whatever, with a task of really managing what are our opportunities? And there's, there's tons of them.
Yeah.
I mean, there, we could probably inundate ourselves with the types of things, but if we found the right ones, we could easily recoup the value of a resource that was managing that for us.
Yeah.
Um, the payback on that, in my mind, would be exponential compared to putting money into a savings account.
Okay. Any other additional thoughts on this? Because in our next agenda item, we'll talk about the other opportunities we will have to discuss it. Any, anything else you want to add for your, for your pitch?
No, no, I don't. No, no, I, no, I appreciate your input. Yeah, yeah. I'm writing it down. And you'll see me in front of the podium at some point.
Super.
I'm making, making a pitch.
David, you look like you have a question.
Well, it's, uh, it, Mike and I had, or select person Ray and I had spoken about this, uh, number of weeks ago and debated or discussed where and when and how to put something forward because it's hard if it just shows up in the budget. But it's hard when you, shows up in the discussion before you get the budget because it's hard to make a decision or a thought in a vacuum. So the general consensus amongst the two of us was sooner rather than later to bring up the discussion. And I guess that my question to you all is, do I find the spot in the budget for that, assign some number to it so you have more discussion when you have a bigger, better picture, or have you just drawn a line through it already before you even get to that point to, you know, like? I've heard all sorts of discussion, but I still don't have any direction. Not quite sure what you wish to do.
Well, yeah, well, well, my feeling and, and my hope, I guess, is that, uh, we don't try to make a decision now without seeing how it would play out in the budget.
Right.
As a hypothetical. Consequently, what I would suggest is putting a number in the budget. You do whatever you feel needs to be done in the budget. Do your magic. Put a number in line, and then we can, the budget committee and this group can up or down recommend or not recommend that line. I, I don't know any other way to.
Well, I don't either, but.
To debate the issue in context. I still don't, I don't see how.
I don't either, but if five, if three of the five of you don't want to do that, I'm not gonna stick it. I'm not gonna create a line. If one of the five of you does, you know, I'm, I don't want to be stuck in a rock and hard place between saying, you know, I'm doing it for everybody that comes through the door either. You know, that's, that's the predicament. I'm in.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be in.
I like to say, it's okay. Um, I thought Steve's idea about having a part-time position that was kind of the, the grant wizard.
Very cool.
Was it, was it a great idea?
Right.
For like you, kind of a similar amount of money, but you'd be paying it for someone to work fifteen hours a week or something, or ten hour, ten hours a week even, specifically on grants. And that position would end up paying for itself.
Well, at least in the short term, we have Mike's proposal that we should weigh before we start workshopping, uh, completely hiring an, an individual to search out and write grants. Um, I mean, if push comes to shove, I, 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 I don't think it's fair to ask David to flesh out and fully form your concept and your proposal. I would say that the onus would be upon you to do that. To come up with a number, to come up where in the budget, you know, the whole shoot and match to make the argument. Um, and since you haven't done that here, I'm willing to hear that out, but my immediate reaction is that I, I don't see a place for this in the budget, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm more than willing to come, come with a line item in the budget or proposal, just as our committees do.
Okay. What is it? What is the rest of the board thinking? Do we want to put it in the budget? Mike's gonna define it, clarify it?
And, yeah, and I will, unfortunately, all I can do, because it's not, um, hypothetically, suggest perhaps to the board, uh, where some of the monies, uh, cuts, as it were, could come from, just to satisfy, yeah, uh, to Kern's point.
Deserves more compensation.
Okay. Steve, your thoughts?
I feel. I like Robin. I like, I like Steve's, but that's, but that's adding a head count. That's.
Yeah, it's a different conversation.
That's, that's a totally different conversation, so.
So you're willing to have it go into the budget and have more conversation about it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I think the conversation is important.
Okay.
I guess I'm not sure what the process has been passed to add a line to the budget.
You know, in twenty-one years of budgeting in Lincolnville, I don't know if I've ever had a s- individual select board ask or request for a certain item. I mean, we've had, we've certainly had discussions in select board meetings about, oh, we want to do, you know, a road or something like that and go, go forth and find the pricing and tell us, you know, what it costs to do. So it's kind of hard to give you any parallel because I can't think of one. And that's kind of why it's on the agenda because if there was a specific process, we'd do it. Now with our committees and department heads, we are in the process of requesting, you know,
Right.
what's your, not your wish list, but what are your items of interest for the coming year? And what are the costs associated with that? And they're putting, hopefully, they're beginning to put that all together. And then we'll just compile it and then it comes to you, but it's unique enough that select person Ray had this idea. I mean, I can, the, the budget can be pages upon pages and millions upon millions of dollars. Not that this one is, but you know what I'm saying? If he came in and wanted to talk about the proverbial airport that I always use for example.
I was gonna say, I, I, that was number two.
That's, uh, that's a different, a different discussion, but.
Yeah, so we're kind of doing it. This, this is the.
So I also struggle then with what precedent it sets of what I present to the, to the budget committee.
Right.
And to our regular operations or whatever.
Right.
I'd have the, I, I'm always willing to talk about anything, but I struggle with the concept and it's not one I support.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I just, I appre- I appreciate the point. It's one that you've made multiple times before. But again, I just, I feel like, you know, we have our priorities list. We have, we have hopes and dreams. There may be grants that directly relate to our priorities list. Yeah, I just.
Can I ask another?
Well, I, let me finish my thought. I just, I, I feel like I'm in the similar boat to Steve where I just, I don't. I feel like we could have this conversation in a different way without creating a new element to the budget.
That's what I'm looking for.
And, and that, that would be great. I mean, I've been, it's not like I'm trying to ramp something through to make sure it's FY twenty-five.
Right.
Like that, but.
I just, I, I just don't know what it is. That's the thing, and I guess that's where I feel like, you know, the responsibility kind of falls on you to, to to flush the idea out more.
Sure. Okay.
I just, sorry, I think you actually.
Yeah, Robin.
You go ahead.
So actually, what you just said actually made me really, what this really requires is a select board to first decide this is something we want to do, and if it is, then it's something we have a budget line for. But not the other way around.
Mm-hmm. Right. And it didn't come up in our but, our priorities workshop as being a priority.
I don't see that as a barrier. I, I, we didn't think of it in our priorities workshop. We've been kind of forest for the trees.
That's not what I.
Working on trees as opposed to.
That's not what I've said. I said, we shouldn't put a budget, we shouldn't have a draft budget line for something we've not voted to support upfront.
Well, I, I.
If we're gonna add something to the, to a budget line for consideration, this body should have already said that's, either we fiscally have to do it, or we've decided we want to do this now a select board or staff go figure out the budget line for it. Those are two separate things.
Yeah. So I guess David's looking for a consensus, so I guess we'll just run down the line. Steve, are you looking to have David take his time to incorporate this into the budget? Kern?
No, I'm looking for the conversation.
Okay.
I'm not looking for David to.
Okay. And I'm, I'm in a similar boat. I'm not, I don't want to kill it, but, but not move forward per David's clarification.
Yeah, no, no, and I hear you. And I, I, yeah, I'd recommend against, uh, doing what I plan to do, is to have a budget aligned, presented to the board, but I think this conversation is pointing out that the board's got to figure out how it is that it wants to do, have these conversations.
Yep.
Because we've kind of proven that we don't know how to do it.
Yep.
And we, and, uh, let's hope we can figure that out.
Yeah.
I don't know what the best time to talk about that is. That is, do we wait until next year when we have a budget priorities workshop?
I don't know, or put it, or put it, put it on an agenda, you know?
Sure.
You know, come, come back to the board with more, you know, like, and, and really make your case, and then we can have that, that discussion.
Yeah, because I think, yeah, I think the board needs to figure out and get as a piece of policy, is it on par with every other committee that the town has? That is, it needs to vote on and suggest budget priorities.
Sure.
That it wants to put before the budget committee and the board, the board itself, which is gonna be interesting how we do that, considering that we're considering our own proposal. And then to town meeting, the, the ultimate, you know, legislative body.
Yep. All right. And Robin, here. Well, the question that I'd had before we sort of moved to, to the consensus statements, but, um, right now, if the fire, I, are other departments, besides possibly our, our assistant harbor master and facilities director, are other departments finding grant opportunities? I, I feel like, um, li- like, you know.
That's kind of a different question, though.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, to me, what I'm thinking is that it matters to me if, say, you know, the fire chief is finding things come across his inbox that, um, give a grant opportunity for funding, you know, some of their equipment and things. I feel like I remember that, that we do have some things like that happening in town in these different, um, departments. And I'm guessing they're just kind of doing their own thing, and one department might be better at, you know, puzzling out where there are grant opportunities than another department. I, I guess what I'm saying is, as a town, are we seeing value in and making a priority of trying to actively look for grant opportunities to help with whatever aspects of our town expenses that we have?
I think our office staff does a pretty darn good job of.
So it's our office staff that's currently doing that for whether it's, um, emergency management or, or fire or highway or whatever?
Each, um, each department to a certain extent is working independently, but together. I mean, we get notices of grant opportunities. Uh, sometimes departments seek out, you know. Uh, sometimes departments seek out, you know, a grant if they're doing something that they think can match up. Um, I think in particular the fire department, a couple of, you know, they've got radio grants or pager grants and turnout things. Um, a lot of it depends on, we get stuck in this is, does a grant drive the program? Or does the program then drive the grant?
Right.
Um, uh, the one that pops into mind, it was a couple of years ago, we had, um, opportunity for a, um, EV charging station. And I can't even remember if it was paid it all or, or a large percentage, but it was at least a large percentage. And we stopped the presses to go see if we could find a location to find a thing to put the charger in, make it all work. Um, turns out it didn't. Turns out it was probably a good thing we didn't put it at the beach because it would've been under a couple of feet of water in January. But, you know, these are, these are things versus, um, well, Hardy Brook on Young Town Road. Um, that's been an identified, um, I won't say failure, but heading towards failure. It's narrow, the tides of water goes across the road. It's been on our priority list of things to address. Um, we found a two hundred thousand dollar grant and obtained, I'm gonna spend more than that. But, you know, that was something where we had an identified need, not unlike same thing we did on, when it was on Townhouse Road and same thing was on Slap City. Here's a problem, what's our solution? Where's our funding sources? We'll, we'll start off looking for, towards the town for a hundred percent and hopefully we'll find something along the way that will pay for it all or part of it. So it's a program driving the search for the money versus a part of the money that then co-ops your program and you head in a different direction. And that's not to say EV is a bad thing because I own one and you own one.
I'm not, I.
But, you know, I don't think until the grant opportunity had presented itself, the select board or the comp plan or anything had ever even thought about putting one in because I'd never heard anybody talk about it.
But, so you said Hardy Brook, so how did we find that grant? Did the town office find that grant or did it fall in our lap? Like, did some?
Dave Kenny was aware that these things are out there and available and
Okay.
our program matched the grant opportunity. We sought, we sought it out, but we knew it was up there.
So the analogous thing then, I'm thinking about our priority list would be that we look for grants that can fund our priority list kind of thing as opposed, you know?
Well, so I get, I feel like we're getting into the weeds of the future conversation that we should be having. Like, three of the five board members have already said we're not interested in moving forward with the concept as it was presented tonight, but we're interested in having future conversations. So I feel like, you know, if you have thoughts, get with Mike, discuss that. So when it's on a future agenda, we can have a more productive conversation rather than a lot of speculative kind of what ifs. You know, because we're not gonna go anywhere with that tonight, except, you know, speculating about, speculating, basically.
It i- it is good to have the conversation so at least the five of you can have the same basis of understanding of how we do what we're already doing. So that if we wanna change what we're already doing, you'd know the starting point. Um, not to disagree with where you're all headed, but.
I mean, I just, in, in essence, you know, the binder we get of our budget is, you know, our priorities list, you know? And it just, you know, so it, for me and the years that I've gone through the budget process, it sort of runs counter to the way that, and that not saying that changing the way we do things can't be a good thing, right? But, I mean, we, we have argued over how many pieces of paper we use and how much that costs and whether we're gonna print on both sides of the paper or not. So it's, it's hard for me to think about essentially setting policy by ha- putting funds into the budget that don't necessarily have a designated purpose. They have a potential purpose, so, yeah. But I do, I look forward to seeing how this conversation evolves so that we can look for any and all opportunities out there that will be supportive of all of our programs. Um, and hopefully, you know, help our tax dollars go further. You know, I think that, I think it's a really great conversation to continue.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, okay, so in that, agenda item number twelve, uh, we will have the process beginning to unfold and you have the draft schedule. Uh, anything stick out where, I mean, ideally every board member is present. Um, and so is there anything that says, oh, my God, I absolutely cannot make these dates? I mean, basically it just adds up to a pretty robust week for us.
So which, I'm just trying to confirm which dates are.
So for us, it would be, we'd have that regular Monday meeting.
February tenth.
And where we get the preliminary and then that's kind of our heads up. And then the eleventh and the thirteenth will be all of the, the, those two heavy presentation nights. And then you can see sprinkled throughout the, um, you know, the.
The rest of them I think are clear. There's, those two lines didn't say select board, so that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yep, yep, yeah, so it's just a thick week that week.
Yep.
And then, of course, um, a meeting I always try to make, don't always, is when the budget committee reviews the provider agency packets. I feel like that, I'm gonna try to go to that because it's so informative. But it's obviously not a requirement for us because they'll come back and do their presentation. Um, so, yeah, so if that is acceptable to everyone, I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that the annual town meeting in June twenty twenty-five be conducted with ballot voting on Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five, followed by the open portion of town meeting on Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-six P M. That the annual town meeting will be prepared to indicate such.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Should that be June twelfth?
Oh, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five, whoa.
Yeah.
Yes, at twenty twenty-five as amended.
Doing the timeline.
Yes.
But, yeah, it's kinda wild to think that, you know, the work that we're starting now basically just is all in service to that June, June deadline. Okay, so the corrected motion with the correct dates, uh, mo- we've been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we also need to schedule, uh, plan for and schedule time for our annual performance review of our town administrator. Um, is the form we've been using okay with everybody?
Good, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and essentially, I'd say January, because we have to do it by the end of January. So really it comes down to which January meeting we wanna do. Um, do you have those dates offhand, David?
I do, January thirteenth and January twenty-seventh.
Second, twenty-seventh.
Yeah, yeah.
Second meeting.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking thirteenth probably is gonna be a busy night.
Too soon, yeah, yeah.
After.
Yep.
Holiday day off.
Yep, uh, okay, so David will distribute those again. Um, I would appreciate them the Friday before, so I have the weekend electronic, drop it off in person, whatever. That is great. Just don't hand it to me at the meeting like, like previous select people have done. I would die.
So, so, so you're giving, you're giving us, you're giving us hours. So, so, okay, it's no problem.
Yeah.
I get to you an hour ahead of time.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. Uh, let's see, um, select person updates. Kern, what do you have for us?
I have nothing to say.
Now, that's a lie, but, Mike, what do you have for us?
I wish I had something to say, but like Kern, I have nothing to say.
Also a lie, as it pertains to this.
I have nothing to say. I have nothing to say about that. Let's, let's.
Steve, what do you have?
I have lots to say, but nothing right now.
Thank you. And Robin?
Nothing to add to this.
Responsible to say.
Lots of nothing conversation.
And I also, I'll just say that, uh, the workforce housing committee unfortunately, uh, has been rescheduled because of various illnesses and so hopefully in January we will have a meeting and then maybe I'll have an update for you, which would be very exciting. Uh, we have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
Uh, prior to that, could we go back to you? Do we have any information on EMS?
Hang on, let's do, let's do the treasure and payroll warrants.
Okay.
Let's take care of that.
I move that the board approve and sign the treasures and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And is there any other business the board wishes to attend to before our final mo- our final piece of business?
Yeah, I got nothing, no.
Is, I'm just wondering if there's any more communication or any information on EMS as it affects our town.
Any response to the letters other than what was printed in the paper?
David, anything?
Yes, um.
Meetings, right?
Yes, up the, uh, first thus far, the town of Rockport hasn't received its license or been back to the main EMS board. Um, I presume they're working on whatever main EMS said they needed to do. Um, got a meeting set up tomorrow afternoon. I met with Samantha Mack, the Hope Town Administrator, and Audra Kaler, the Camden Town Manager, last week? Last week. And to start discussions amongst the three communities that remain. And we're gonna have a sit down with, initial sit down with Northeast tomorrow to see where we all go together, or if we all go together.
Okay.
Um, and is it, are you all set?
Yep.
Okay. And then I just wanted to bring up briefly for the board under, um, our non-agenda items numbered, or number, letter G, um, the letter that the town of Islesborough wrote to our commissioner.
Sure.
Um, and I guess just a heads up to the board, uh, that at our next, not our next meeting, but January meeting, um, I'm gonna put on the agenda having a discussion about writing a letter, uh, basically in support of this and echoing this to go to the commissioner as well. Because they definitely, I, it's my belief and hopefully the board supports this, that, you know, we should, we should support their efforts for, um, for EMS.
Sure.
And, um, and, yeah.
That's totally appropriate, yeah.
Yeah, because it sounds like they were basically blindsided by this
Yeah.
mandate for, for change and where the ferries birthed and how it's going to affect their EMS. So, um, yeah, um, okay.
That's too bad.
Yeah, yeah, Steve.
Um, one question for David regarding IT, any, any progress?
Haven't made any progress since last time we, haven't made any progress. It's more on me than it is on the other end.
Okay. Uh, well, if there's no other business, then I'll entertain a final motion.
That's what you're saying.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
And. Number of warrants coming your way to sign?
Yep, warrants and warrants.